Is going to be having to start. Item this morning, so I'm kind of interested to get that going. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I do like the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here, thank you. Um, oh, there's a automatic defibrillator in the back of the room if anybody has a heart attack. I shouldn't joke about those because I have used them and they are effective. We will be starting this morning. We're going to rearrange the agenda just a little bit. And I apologize especially to the Boy Scouts who come to watch a board meeting and you're, we're going to leave in just a moment. But we will try to be brief. We will be having an executive session on personnel. It's the internal allocation of personnel resources, also known as personnel. We will try to be brief with that. When we come back, we will be having a brief update from our emergency management director, Paul Johnson, and then we will get back to the agenda as printed. So with that, I would...
Motion to go into executive session, second, personnel.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments to that motion? Again, we will try to be as brief as possible on this. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear due to technical difficulties. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh's vote won't appear, but he votes yes, says either the rest of the commissioners, motion passes.
Thank you. Again, we will try to be as brief as possible. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Motion to reconvene as the Board of Commissioners, because then we're going to hear from our Emergency Management Director. So, we have a motion and a second to reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And now, at this point, I'll be asking Paul Johnson, our Emergency Management Director, to give a brief update. He has some other commitments he needs to be getting to, and that's why he asked if he could be early here.
Emergency Management Agency. First of all, I'm going to just have a handout, and I'll show you some slides. It's up on the screen that gets the same view here.
It's from the Board of Commissioners.
The couple of weeks ago, when we talked about this, we were in a series of ice jam threats and flooding. And since that time, things have changed drastically, as you know. We went from threat of water and river flooding to a period of red flag warnings, too dry and with high winds, which caused us all some concerns, especially in western part of the county and down in Sarpy County. And now, I was asked to kind of give this little two-minute update on our flood risk, based on our flooding potential. And what you're looking at here is a view of the flood threat in our vicinity. As you can see, we really don't have much in Nebraska. The flood threat's to the north. That's where the heavy snows are, and that's where the flood melt is a primary concern. The, if, I will tell you this. We typically have weekly conference calls on flood potential. And Thursday is our last conference call on the flood potential. Based on what the USGS and the Weather Service hydrologists have determined, Nebraska is, has a much drastically reduced flood risk than what they had in February. If you look at the second, the second view there, the second view shows the threat in Nebraska. And then, this is as of March 9th. So, it's a couple of days old. And I can assure you that probably on Thursday, when we have that next call, that the graph will look even different. The map will look different, and those flood risks, some of those will be reduced or gone. As you can see, it's kind of a difficult map to see, but on the left side is the description there of what's at risk. And it's mainly south. You know, the river, as it comes, as it gets through Omaha, the Missouri River goes further south. Of course, it flattens out, and communities south of us, especially over in the Iowa side, are the greatest threat potential for flooding. On the upper right, you'll see a purple area. That purple area is that snow melt area. And as you can see, that they are concerned about that, at least as of March 9th. But it presents probably a greater risk in the upper right quadrant of the geography. So, pretty much for Nebraska, it's isolated and minimal at this point in time. And of course, things could change. You never know what the weather's going to be, and we could get lots of thunderstorms and get our localized rain. But predominantly, we're awful dry down here in the southeast. And so, the flood concern is really from water up north. It's not us. And the main flood threat is on the Missouri River. And we have our test property out there on the Missouri River. We check with them to make sure everything's okay on the Missouri. And that's kind of our canary in the coal mine out there, is Claire Dootes' property. So, anyway, we really, we just keep an eye on it. And as you noticed on that other graph, you know, the releases at Gamma Point Dam are quite low right now. And we do expect those increases to come up. So, we'll find out on Thursday as to what level. But, you know, in the past, we've had upwards, close to 90,000 and above, 100,000 cubic feet per second of water. So, at 35,000, it's much lower. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Boyle.
Is there a imminent flood warning somewhere? Or is there a serious flooding that's heading for Douglas County? Or is it all up in South Dakota and stuff like that?
Yeah, not at this point.
Okay.
Not at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Much better news than last year.
Next, I'll be on travel next week, but I'll be back in two weeks, so.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Okay, now, we will get back to our normal order of doing things. It would, I guess we need to adjourn or recess as the Board of Commissioners and reconvene then as a Board of Equalization. Board of Equalization. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Could we please vote? I count on Ellen's flying fingers to keep up.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion, and motion passes, but, Mr. Chair, it was a motion by Commissioner Craft and a second by, thank you.
Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board of Equalization. Oh, do we need a roll call? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Craft? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. Item A is approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Item B, or, excuse me, two weeks ago, the meeting two weeks ago. Item B is calling for a meeting for one week from today for the hearing on certified assessment corrections.
Motion to approve A and B.
Questions or comments to either of these? Could we please vote?
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Citizen comments. Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on any items not on the agenda? This would be your opportunity to do so. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'd like to submit something to the board. That is my reply to various meetings over the last couple of years, some of which some of us citizens have been referred to as disingenuous, dishonest, maybe even lying. Primarily, that has to do with the question of refugee resettlement, because one of the big issues seems to be...
This is Board of Equalization we're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said it was the Commissioners.
Well, it...
I'll reintroduce that later then. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. Okay. Is... We have resolutions under DE. We have items F through H. Is there...
And adjourned.
And adjourned.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Does anybody have any of these items that they would like pulled out for individual attention? If not, could we please vote? Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And we are actually not quite ready for Board of Corrections yet, so we're gonna go straight to the Board of Commissioners meeting and come back to Board of Corrections later. So, could we please have the roll call for the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Commissioner Borgson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle is here in the back. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Craft? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. The first item for consideration is the minutes from the meeting two weeks ago and the claims for payment through today's date.
Second.
Questions or comments? Then could we please vote on one, A and B?
Commissioner Kavanaugh. There we go. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The consent agenda is next on the agenda. Does any... Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like pulled out for individual attention? If not, could we please vote on that?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I got Commissioner Rogers for the motion, but who made the second? Commissioner Boyle, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Recognition and proclamations. We have Laura Knigley retiring from the Treasurer's Office after 34 years of service. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Ewing, Douglas County Treasurer. And Laura is actually... But I just wanted to say a few words about Laura. She was a very dedicated employee in the Douglas County Treasurer's Office for about 34 years and was a longtime assistant manager. And then, I had the privilege of being able to promote her to manager of our Midtown Customer Service Center, where she did a great job for us, and we're very proud of her, the work she did, the leadership she provided to the Treasurer's Office. So, we gladly accept that for her, and we will give it to her, I believe, March 18th.
John?
Before you leave, I just wanna compliment your department. I know you're in contact with a lot of people and really appreciate the way that you and Mr. Kavanaugh and the rest of your team manage your different satellite facilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Just gonna say, John, I should've said this to you, you and Mr. Kavanaugh. It's really, I really appreciate your answering all my bizarre questions that I send. And they are bizarre. No, they're good answers to bizarre questions. Thanks.
On another note, both Laura's father and grandfather served the county and this community, as well as district court judges.
Right. That's what I thought.
All right. Oh, neat, neat.
Cathedral people.
Thank you.
Cathedral people.
We have two recognitions. Yeah, I would think one vote could do for both. The second recognition is for Ruth Hytman, retiring from the Douglas County District Court Office after 16 years of service. I don't believe Ruth is here. I would entertain a...
Motion to second.
And this is for both items, for both recognitions. Thank you. Questions or comments? Then could we please?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Laurie, this is the opportunity to address the County Board on any item not on the agenda. Good morning, Ica.
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'll just pick up where I left off. My main criticism is regarding the United Nations. It wasn't just me that got up here and talked about refugee resettlement not being within our control. Anybody that's done very much research at all knows that this program is directed by the United Nations without our input. If you dig deep enough, you'll know that refugees are sent from various places that we are unaware of and to places that we're not advised of, often in the middle of the night, often to very small communities within our country. And then, that small community can't support them. And then, we're the haters. We're the perpetrators. Well, we're tired of that. But what happens when you listen to a lot of the national organizations and 501(c)(3)'s that are the welcomingers? Yes, we all want to welcome legal immigrants and people that want to assimilate into our community, our culture. We don't need to enter... Into their culture. That's not what we're here for, and that's not what the immigration laws are for. Most of the sources that are knowledgeable, much more so than you folks are, are quoted in that email. So, feel free to research it yourselves. But please don't refer to citizens up here that do have comments as being dishonest or disloyal or untruthful or possibly even lying, because most cases, that is not the case. Thank you.
Would anybody else wish to address this board under citizen comments? All right, we have already had our emergency management update, so we go down to the public hearing. Captain Hudson, welcome back. This is a public hearing to establish a law regarding false alarms from electronic security systems that result in results for emergency response, to establish a penalty, provide a method of enforcement. We don't usually do three readings. I don't ever remember referring to anything that way, but... Oh, because it's ordinance. Because we don't normally do ordinances.
Correct.
So, this is all new for us. But we have been talking about this for a few weeks, and today's the opportunity that we can finally take action if we so choose. Captain Hudson.
Captain Hudson, Uniformed Services Bureau. Just here to answer any other further questions you may have on this ordinance.
I was just pointing out, I need to officially open this as a public hearing.
Okay.
On the ordinance. Thank you for that.
Yep. Captain Hudson, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Uniformed Services Bureau Captain. I'm just here to answer any questions that you would have in regards to the ordinance today.
Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments about this? I only heard one comment ever, and it seems like this is the thing to do to me. It seems prudent and appropriate. Commissioner Borgson?
I just, can you, I know you answered this a couple of weeks ago, but I don't remember the answer. We have contacted every alarm owner, system owner, to let them know that this is coming?
We have not, because we don't know who has alarms out in county. There's no record. We don't keep any records of anyone who has alarms in the county. So, what will happen if it passes, the vendor, Cry Wolf, they have a whole onboarding process. Part of that process is public notification. It will be, the actual ordinance will be put on our website, on our Facebook page, but they will also send communications out to all their alarm holders out in the county. Like I said, we don't have that information. They have that information.
And so, nothing's been sent to them that this might even be coming?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle.
I just say that it's a lot like other, if I could characterize it this way, other taxes or other charges the government makes. We don't contact people and say, "You have to pay the wheel tax," or "You have to do this or do that." It's the person's responsibility to find out, and when they find out the hard way, I guess, sometimes. But I'm not bothered by no notice. I understand what you're saying, but I think it'll work out. They'll comply probably through their vendor, you know? And it's the vendor's chance to upgrade the equipment, too, so they ought to be pretty happy about that.
And it was posted in Daily Record, too, that poor, per the statute. So, there was notice made, just individual notice. There's no way we would know who has alarms out in county.
Remember, too, there's no charge for the first alarm.
Correct.
So, when that happens, this is your opportunity, the responding deputy or whomever, to say, "Be aware if this happens again." There will be consequences. Commissioner Craft?
And I do believe there is an article in the World Herald, and this is the public notification, because this is the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments during this public hearing? Well, in that case, I believe we will close the public hearing. Have a motion and a second to approve. Questions or comments?
And just a reminder, actually, on this one, by law, I have to do a voice vote, so...
Oh, that's right.
We will not do a machine vote on this one.
That's right. Okay, very good.
So, at night, everyone, it was motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
And this is to establish, vote on the ordinance, to establish a law regarding false alarms from electronic security systems that result in requests for emergency response, and to establish a penalty and provide a method of enforcement. Commissioner, so I'll do the vote now. Commissioner Borgson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent at the moment. Commissioner Craft? Commissioner Craft? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Captain Hudson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the discussion regarding the issuance by the county of its Nebraska Educational Facilities Revenue Refunding Bond Series 2020. Okay. Our money guy isn't here, so we'll turn to you.
Very good. Josh Meyer, Q-Tech Rock Bond Counsel to Creighton University. We, out of an abundance of caution and trying to model sort of a new system, are just here for discussion today, so there's no resolution before you. Creighton University has the opportunity to refinance some of its old debt. They have the good fortune of doing that with a private purchaser. It was Wells Fargo when they presented this debt, or when you acted as their conduit issuer in 2014. Wells Fargo hasn't expressed an interest, and Creighton has signed a letter of intent to proceed with Wells Fargo, but obviously, subject to your all approval, as you are the conduit issuer of that debt. So, as we usually state when we're in front of you, there is no liability to the county. You are acting strictly as a conduit issuer on behalf of Creighton University. You've done so many times before. This is indeed a refinancing and a restructuring of outstanding debt, so they're not financing anything new this go-around, rather just being good citizens of their debt and stretching it out and re-amortizing some of it. So, keeps the same maturity date. They are very fortunate they will be restructuring the interest rate, again, subject to all your approval. We will need to do a public hearing, so there is what we call a TEFRA hearing. It's where there's public notice, and folks get to come and, like you all do, public hearings, but it's specific to the tax code. So, if and when we're before you with a resolution, we will also conduct that public hearing. And happy to entertain any questions you have, but it is, for our perspective, a pretty standard bond issuance with the county acting as the conduit issuer. But I know that you all have had questions in the past, so we wanted to just come before you for discussion and see if there's anything we could answer.
I very much appreciate your coming down for this discussion today, Josh. Does anybody have any questions for him? Okay, sounds good. When might you consider doing this, you think?
The tax notice, so the TEFRA notice requires at least seven days, so I would guess two meetings out, we would potentially be back in front of you.
Very good. We will look forward to that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Child and Youth Services Committee, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, this is just a quarterly QRS report from the JDI Collaborative Group. Shelley Salter will be presenting it.
Nope. Nope. I thought I had the glasses on to help, but... I believe you already have the handouts. I am Shelley Salter.
Yes, yes, we do. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I am the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordinator for Douglas County. I work for District Four Juvenile Probation for the state of Nebraska. And today, we are going to do the fourth quarter, October, November, December of 2019, quarterly review summary for our JDAI initiative. Just a quick reminder and a little update for you. We talk each time about there are nine points in the juvenile justice system where adults make decisions that could change the trajectory of the kids we serve's lives. These are the nine that are identified in Douglas County as those points in our system. Today, we are going to talk about one that is detention. And then, just a little information is that Douglas County as a whole, through this initiative and through Operation Youth Success, will be focusing on the first five system points, looking to do the same thing we do with detention, at arrest, at referral, at diversion, so we can start finding other ways to reduce the number of kids that are coming to us at detention. So, today, we're gonna talk about the system point of detention, but there are nine places where adults make decisions in this system that can change the trajectory of a child's life. The first slide that we always look at is what we call our racial/ethnic disparities or disproportionate minority contact funnel. And just to remind us, using the example of African-American youth, that they are 13% of our total population in Douglas County. And when we look at the first point of the juvenile justice system, which is law enforcement contact, these same youth then become 50% of the kids that we are considering at the system point that is arrest. The total youth that were referred from law enforcement and requesting detention from probation in this fourth quarter, again, looking at African-American youth, they go from 13% of our population, half of the kids arrested, and then 58% of those kids, law enforcement is calling and asking probation intake for detention regarding these youth. And then, once that happens, we see that number remain high, 13% of our total population, and yet, 50% of the kids that we detained in this quarter are African-American youth. This is the quarterly review summary. I know you guys have seen this before. This is the actual tool and the printout that it gives us at the end of the quarter, telling us what happened with the kids that were presented. So, again, we're gonna start from the right on this. And these are showing us that 23 kids in this quarter did not get the benefit of the risk assessment instrument. These kids were detained and were not screened by probation intake. Again, going to the left, looking under the auto hold. These are kids that we are required to detain. It's actually on these that's for kids who are runaways from other states who also have warrants for their arrest in those states. So, because of federal interstate compact of juvenile rules, those are kids that we do detain to go back to the jurisdiction from which they're from. Looking again from, sorry, from the right going to the left again, those are the kids that we received in this time that were released, telling you also what their scores were on their risk assessment instrument, if they scored... if they scored low, medium, or high. The next block to the left is kids who were released with conditions. Same idea, how they scored on our risk assessment instrument. All of these kids would have been released to an alternative to detention in this category. And then finally, to the left, this is the kids that were detained in the fourth quarter of 2019 in Douglas County. Seven kids scoring low, 20 medium, and 72 scoring high. For the purposes of JDAI, we are looking at the seven kids who scored low and the 20 that scored medium. These are kids that we would like to see have some different response when presented to probation intake, to have an alternative to detention or in-home services that we could release them. These are kids based on the risk assessment instrument, would not be a danger to our community. They may be kids with high needs or high risk to themselves, but would not be kids that we would want to see detained. These are the kids we're looking for alternatives to detention for. Now, the next slide I'm going to show you is new, and it's a follow-up to a question that we had last time. We were talking about the overrides, and you had asked, are we able to view the overrides by race? And yes, we are. So I just wanted to bring for you today what this looks like in our quarterly review summary. I know that it's small. You all have a copy of the PowerPoint, and it was sent also by email, if that makes it easier. Looking at just the detained youth and the kids who scored low and medium, we look here then by race. We can see which kids were overridden into detention during this quarter. Breaking down those numbers at the top, the seven kids with low scores, and you go under that, it'll tell you the race of those kids and how they were overridden. So this is just a.
The thing, but I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. So if we start from the left side of the page.
Left side.
Where it says race, ethnicity.
Right.
First column says total.
Yeah.
The next column says detained.
Right.
And if you look where it says medium and follow underneath, just for an example.
Yes.
20 kids were overridden to detention, that scored medium. And then as I go down, it tells me 13 of those kids were African-American youth. One was an Asian youth. Two were Hispanic Latino.
Okay, is, is, is this a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, I don't know that this is one that gets an answer of a good thing or a bad thing.
I mean, did they score their, excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I? They scored their, this medium, medium score, I mean, is that, is that a good thing, or is it better to have a high score?
Well, the medium score is youth who we would like to see released to an alternative to detention.
Got it.
High score are kids that scored for detention. Those are kids that we would expect to see detained.
All right.
And so if they score low or high, there's an override to the tool where somebody said, yes, I know they scored low or high, but for whatever reason, they were detained. And so last time, someone had asked, do we know what that looks like by race? And we do our overrides, and that's something that our Racial Ethnic Disparities Committee looks at, as well as our data team.
Thank you.
Okay, so generally speaking, in this quarter, we had 195 kids who were brought to probation intake. That means 195 times law enforcement called probation intake and requested detention on a youth. Again, four of the kids were detained in this quarter because they were runaways from another state that had a warrant. 23 of the kids we talked about earlier are the kids who did not receive the benefit of the risk assessment instrument. All of those kids were detained. And if we look at those 23 kids, just to get an idea of what kind of kids are automatically detained and not getting the benefit of the risk assessment instrument, 18 times, those were court orders. That means the youth was in front of a judge and for whatever reason was ordered to detention at a hearing. One youth is a loss of an alternative to detention. And again, we have one alternative detention program in Douglas County that is allowed to detain when a youth fails. That's what this is. And then we have four, what we're calling county court transfers. So these are youth that came into the system as adults and have now transferred back to the juvenile system. When they transfer back to us, we make sure to put them in our data, so they're included with the information that we're giving. So that's what that last four is. And then this is just again for us to look at the total youth by race, ethnicity, whenever we can. And so what this tells you is the blue line tells you the total youth that came to us over the quarter by race. The red line then tells you how many of those kids were detained. And then the green tells you how many of those kids also did not receive the benefit of a risk assessment instrument. So this is how we start to look at the kids, how they move through the system, so that we can start to decide if there are racial and ethnic disparities that exist. If so, where would we want to start drilling down to find out why that happens or what it means for us? So 195 kids were given the risk assessment in the fourth quarter, kids that were, where law enforcement called and requested detention through probation intake. Of those 195, 99 of them were detained. 41 were released, and 55 were released with conditions. So this would be kids that were released on an alternative to detention, something else in the community, keeping them safe, keeping them home, getting them back to court, all of those things. 41 were released that way. And then 55 were released without, excuse me, with conditions. I did that backwards. 41 were released, straight released, would have gone home with parent or guardian. 55 were released with alternatives to detention.
Of these youths who were released, is that because they're, why were they, I mean, I'm glad they were, but why, I mean, why?
That would be kids who want to be one of two things. They're kids either who did not score for detention, meaning this is the first time, probably likely the first time that we've seen these kids, the offense that they're being presented for is likely a misdemeanor, which would score lower. And so they legitimately do not score for detention. There could be kids on there that scored medium or high, that we were, that were already being managed by a probation officer, where we had an officer in touch when this happened, and there was a new law enforcement contact that was able to say, put this, put this youth right back in the alternative to detention that they were in. Sometimes we'll get charges on kids that might be from six months ago, that appear new. And so we'll say, we know, we know we knew this was going to happen. This is a youth we're already working with. We can keep them safe in the community.
Okay, well, the way I read, 41 of these youths were released, that you just don't do anything, you let them go. Is that true? That's not true?
Well, no, they would still be kids. So depending on where they are in the system.
Yeah.
If it's a pre-adjudicated youth, someone who hasn't been adjudicated yet on a crime, they could be released simply because of the score, but they will come back, they will see a judge, they will have a first appearance, they will be put on probation, they will go through all of that.
So, okay, so they're still under your jurisdiction or the counties?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Now, I understand that. Okay, I thought they were just kind of sent home.
No, they, they will still come back to us through the court process.
Thank you.
Yep. And then talking about the average daily population, and make sure, remember, there's two numbers here. For the purposes of JDAI, we look at kids who are on juvenile charges in the youth center. And the average daily population in this quarter was 44.6. And then, because I know it's important overall, when we look at kids who have adult charges in this quarter, that average was just, just under 38 kids every day in the Douglas County Youth Center for adult charges, for a total average daily population in the quarter of about 82.
The average daily population is one thing, but what about the length of stay? Does that come up later?
I have a slide on length of stay coming up.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
And so reasons that kids were detained. And again, we talked about this this time, last time, but just to remind, in this quarter, 27% of the kids were detained on technical reasons, and I do have a follow-up slide about that. And 73 kids were detained because of offenses. And this is a real important shift in Douglas County that we've seen happen, probably since maybe August of last year. This is what we want. When kids have a technical violation of their probation and what they're already working with, we want to be able to use our incentives or sanctions grid in order to get working with those kids back right away. We know you had this setback. This is what we're going to do. We want to see kids presented because of new charges, kids that have a new charge where law enforcement's calling and asking for detention. So this is a major shift in our county, and I have some data on that coming up later too, to see this number starting to flip. We're seeing more kids present because of new offenses and less kids presenting because of technical violations of what they're currently being supervised. In the fourth quarter of 2018, almost half of the kids came in because of a technical violation and not a new law offense.
Fourth quarter 2018.
Let's see if I have.
Because, you know, we're comparing numbers, but to what?
You know what? I can do it on the next slide. Is that fair? Okay, so the types of technical violations that we see are usually warrants or violations of probation. So warrants in this quarter was 25% of the youth detained, so 25 out of 99. And then to your question, in the fourth quarter of 2018, there were 25 out of 89, so 10 less kids in that quarter. And then for violations of probation in this quarter, there were two youth that had a violation of probation who were detained, whereas in the fourth quarter of 2018, there were 17.
How are, how are the warrants served? I mean, as a, does a sheriff go out to a school and take the kid out of school? Or does he go to the home? Or how's, how are those usually served?
Well, I don't know if I can answer how they're served initially, because, and let me tell you why. Because we usually see two types of warrants mostly on the juvenile side. And that is either a warrant for an unlawful absence, meaning the youth is absconded from wherever it was. The judge said to stay, whether it was at your parents' home, your aunt's home, in a group home, wherever it was. So as far as how the warrant is served, that I don't know. I can tell you what happens once the youth is located on that type of a warrant. So depending on where they're located, which oddly enough, a lot of times, youth will be located because they go home. And a parent will call and say, my child's been on run, they're home now. And sometimes in those cases, they can call law enforcement. The warrant would be terminated because the youth is located, law enforcement sees they're safe. They will still call probation intake because this is an active warrant. And then the same process would happen, where they would look at a risk assessment instrument, find out what is this kid missing for? And then depending on what it is, the probation officer could either, working with the youth and family already, say, okay, so-and-so's home, this is what we're going to do, these are the services we're going to put in the home for the youth and family now that he's returned. It is possible kids can also get detained for this. If they're unlawfully absent and gone from a placement, say, six or eight months, if they had any new charges that came with it. So there's a lot, how the sheriff serves it initially, that I don't know the answer to. But I can tell you what happens when they come back in.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask you these questions, but I.
No, you're fine.
What, what triggers a warrant? I mean, is it, what, what happens? Does somebody call somebody and say, hey, listen, this kid did this, or he's not here, or whatever? What starts it all?
Well, I, I, I don't know that I have the answer for. Yeah, well, so it'd be two ways. Either they failed, so the other warrant type would be a failure to appear warrant is another big one we see. So if the youth is not at court one day, the court can issue a warrant that they failed to appear.
And how are they notified to go to court?
Of the initial hearing that they missed.
Okay, so they go, they, you're in court, and then they're told to come back in two weeks?
It could be that. It could be notice that was sent. It could be, yeah, it could be because you were in court and judge says, come back June 16th. It could be because you've got a ticket and somebody sent you a letter in the mail saying when court was, and you didn't show.
Okay, well, I, I have so many problems with probation and warrants because I, you know, these children are not, I mean, they're kind of like, actually, I'd probably be in the same boat. I miss things. I don't pay attention, you know, and I, I mean, things happen. And so these kids are not, you know, I, I don't believe they're really, they're not trained to respond to this kind of thing. And I think probably they're all, I'm not, not being critical of families or anything, but I think they're, they may be a little bit disorganized anyway. And so to send a letter to somebody and say, be in court, is kind of like, I mean, throw it in the trash or let it sit there and put your pop bottle on top of it, you know? I, I just don't know. I'm really worried about and concerned that we serve warrants on children who just don't have the, you know, don't have any, I don't want to say notice, but they just aren't familiar with what they should be doing, even though it says you got to come back. I don't know. Maybe I'm just over, overthinking this, but I think it starts, I'm worried because I think it starts to spiral down, okay? And if they have a sheriff come out and pick them up, that's really a disaster. I mean, that kind of stuff. So anyway, that's, that's my opinion. I'll come over and visit with you about these things.
Well, and, and it's worth discussion because I think I would agree with you. And we have noticed our failure to appear warrants have increased since July 1st of last year, when we had a, a new law come into effect about detention. And so one of the things we're looking at now, and this is maybe more of a, as a parent than a JDAI coordinator, right, is to find out, were the parents at the hearing?
Yeah.
Because if the parent also fails to appear, I say, and my children will probably not appreciate this, but it's true. My kids are 22 and 26. I don't know that they can get to the sixth floor of the Douglas County Courthouse all on their own because it's not something they've ever had to do. So I question when you're asking a 14-year-old, when we know transportation is one of the number one.
Yeah.
Issues that our families have. So now we're starting to track, were the parents present? Because if the parents were present and the youth is on run, then that's something different than if the youth and parent both fail to appear to court. Is there a softer way that we can be dealing with this?
You know, what I think we ought to be thinking about is we ought to be thinking about having the judges go to the neighborhoods. We ought to have a couple of, two or three neighborhoods. I know Krista Rogers and I share the, the bulk of these children who have difficulty. Maybe we ought to have a site someplace near the adult probation, have an office there where a judge would go, and someplace they're familiar and where they can get to. Because so, transportation is such a big deal. And the other thing is, they don't know. These buildings are a mess. I mean, I get on the elevator and I say, whatever happened to basement, you know? What button do you push? But anyway, that's my opinion. I have a lot of them, obviously.
Me too. Me too. But I can say, in Lancaster County, I know there was a pilot at one time about judges being in the schools. It was a truancy project. I could look into it and let you know what I find.
I'd be interested.
If they're still doing it. But Judge Ryder in Lancaster was doing it.
Well, I think we've got some judges that are thinking that way now. Okay, good deal. Thanks.
All right. And then, so just over time, looking at our warrant population and seeing how it is going down. This is an important part of the work we do. I know people tend to look only at the average daily population, which is important. But these other indicators are important to us too, because they tell us different things about the system. When I first started, and I told you guys, I know I said this last month too, the warrant list was like 150 kids. The warrant list would come out and there'd be about 150 kids on it. And I think the one we saw two weeks ago was about 32. So I think there's just a lot of good work happening to prevent kids from getting warrants issued. And I think too, the probation incentives and sanctions grid helps with that a bit. We got to expect that kids are not going to be perfect, and so what can we do for every little thing? And then again, how do we, four times to one time, four times tell you when you're doing something good compared to one time when maybe you didn't do something so good? So I think all those kinds of trainings about case management and how we use these things is, is a benefit to what's happening with our data. So the technical violations total, again, when I started, we were at 81%. And our technical violations in the last quarter were 27% of the kids we see detained. So now, and I think Commissioner Boyle, this might have been your question, about length of stay. So this is our fourth quarter length of stay for 2016, 2017, and 2018. In 2019, we are still at 40 days with an average length of stay for kids with juvenile charges. And then looking at racial, ethnic disparities or disproportionate minority contact, how kids are coming into the system. Oops, I'm sorry. That should say Q4 2019, 79%. So with our kind of last three years, this again, as many changes as we have seen, the improvements when it comes to overall kids brought to probation intake, the improvements with our technical violations, a lot of different things has not done anything to change the overall rate of kids of color who are in the Douglas County Youth Center. And then just looking at our average daily population over time, the red being what the average daily population was in the fourth quarter since 2015. And then average daily population for the year, and so the average daily population for 2019 is 52.
Why, you know, I don't, I don't get it. I mean, we know what's going on with these kids. We know what the charges were, we know the laws they broke and everything else. Why are they sitting for 52 days? I mean, surely we must, can we goose the lawyers or something? Something has to happen.
Well, just real quick, the 52 is average daily population. The length of stay was 40 days.
Oh, I see. Excuse me.
Which still, you know, nationally, we would like to see a length of stay of around 20 days. I can tell you of a couple of things happening. And this is not a part of the presentation, it's just too much information. But you all have also in here something that says Q4 2019, four categories, individual memos, to give you an idea about that length of stay. So something we started doing last year was, after we did our quarterly review and figured out who the kids were, we started asking ourselves, you know, who exactly is here? So we realized we have four categories of kids. We have pre-adjudicated kids, so kids are kind of here for the first time, they haven't been adjudicated on offense. We have kids who are on probation, who are coming back in usually again for a violation of some sort or a warrant. We have kids on adult charges, which, other than the one slide I showed you telling their average daily population are not figured anywhere else in this data, these are just kids with juvenile. And then we have kids that we're just kind of considering other. It's usually one or two kids that'll. It's usually one or two kids that'll be in the detention center, not for any of those other three reasons. So the average length of stay for pre-adjudicated youth is about 41 days, so those are the kids who haven't gone to court and been adjudicated on offense yet. So we do have some work happening, and it's really kind of new, looking at what could we do for those kids in the area of maybe some different alternatives to detention, or increasing the ability of the alternatives that we have now to engage families in a different way, and allow kids to make mistakes, but still stay on the alternative, so that kind of be my answer for those pre-adjudicated kids. And then for the kids on probation, again, a lot of what we see there, too, is kids who have lost placement in group homes, and so probation, as a statewide agency, has done a lot of things to look at that. And again, the incentives and sanctions, that's kind of new to probation, the idea that we can sanction kids instead of having to violate and detain, that's one thing. Probation has something now, too, they're calling, it's a staffing, that's an ACE staffing, and right now I cannot think of what that stands for, so I apologize, because I should know, where when we have kids who are losing placement in these group homes, we're able to build a team at a statewide level to help us staff these kids. Sometimes if I am the probation officer, and my supervisor and I have been supervising this youth for a period of time, and we make a decision about what we think should happen, when we get ourselves stuck, we've got to bring other people in. Because we do get stuck sometimes with kids and families, and seeing what we're seeing, we need to bring other people in to staff those cases with us, to see things different, to pull out the strengths that maybe we weren't able to do the first time around, to help us find service at home that we could do for those kids. So that's something else probation is doing. They now have a 14-day notice, which is kind of new for placement on the probation side, which means if I am a group home and I want a child to leave because of their behavior, and usually that's what we see, is their behavior in the placements is why we're getting them back, I give probation 14 days, letting them know that Mike is going to be released from this program, and give us 14 days to figure out something to do, instead of calling and saying, "You need to come get him today," because that would end up in a detention, to say, "Okay, well, let us figure out what else could we do? Is there another placement that looks like this one we could send the youth to in that time, or can we build a plan in the family home to bring them there?"
You know, that bothers me, I think what we need to do, if somebody reminds me of, there was a, I'm not going to name it, but there's, we had an incident here in Omaha some time ago, but a patient who was suffering from, who was kind of violent, threw something and broke a television set, and so ended up calling 911 and ended up in corrections. And so he had a person that was mentally disabled who got taken out of a facility treating this person for mental disability and then put in jail. And to me, saying that, you know, some, a child loses placement, what that says is, I mean, you're almost tattooing loser on the person's forehead. It's very disruptive, it's already, he's already, he already has a disruptive life, he's moving around. I picked up a kid one time from Fremont and bought him home for Christmas, and I asked the caretaker, "Could I see his room?" And they were kind of stunned, "See his room?" And I said, "Yeah." So I went to his room, and this kid had some kind of a crummy mattress on the floor, and his belongings were in garbage bags. So that says this is garbage. I mean, we're sending all these messages, and when we take a kid out of, we've got to figure out, somebody who's, you know, if they lose placement, I don't like that at all. I think what we have to have is places that can handle them without sending the kid out. We need to figure out what to do and quit moving them around like they're furniture. I mean, it says to them, they're losers, this is what's happening to you, they, I mean, I just, I don't know, I'm really bothered by it. It really bothers me a lot, because we're sending these signals to these kids that they're worthless.
Again, I couldn't probably agree with you more, and I think that, for me, is particularly in the area of the congregate care, that's not medical, right? We know some kids need a medical placement, and that's different, and I think that you're just right on when you talk about the circumstances surrounding the child and what their ecology is, right? It doesn't make sense to me generally to send a child out of the home, and how do parents then increase their capacity to parent the child that they have? If we do better to keep kids in home, and do better to work with parents to learn how to parent the child you have.
Supposedly, we're having alternatives to the juvenile center that's proposed to be built downtown, that we're supposed to have placement at the Omaha Home for Boys, Uta Holly, and Child Savings for children that have been traumatized. Is this, have you even talked about this, or do you have any involvement with that, or do you, who's making recommendations? Are these children going to the Omaha Home for Boys yet, or are we, is that just a, is that in the future, or do you know?
Well, kids go to Omaha Home for Boys as far as a group home setting, they have something new, it's crisis stabilization. It was supposed to be open two weeks ago, and I don't know that I can tell you today for sure if it has or not, but I could double check. It should be open by now, but I guess I don't.
Okay, all right.
They have opened, okay.
So our children, I'd like to know, if you could find out, if there are children who are being sent there, and actually, I'd like to see them be placed there, so they're not coming from one place, going to another. If you can, you know, we really need to think that out, because I think moving them around really is a problem.
Agreed.
Anyway, that's not your doing, but I'm just saying.
Right.
Also, Uta Holly, we're supposed to have Uta Holly and Child Savings out there operating as well.
Oh, they both are, definitely. And I, we also have an Alternatives to Detention memo that we could do, that I, that we do, that I could send you, that shows utilization of alternatives. It's not something we've brought here, maybe Luke and I will look and see what we could bring out to add to this, that might give you a little more information on that.
I'd be interested in that, that'd be great. And I really apologize for, you know, you do a terrific job, and this data is really, really useful, so I appreciate it very much.
No apologies, you always say what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's good. I have that habit, too. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for this. Just to go back to a couple of basics, the average daily population figures that I see on, well, on your slides, they're page nine and 10, in your handout to us, that's page five, and I commend you for saving the trees by putting double slides on a page. But my reading of the slide number nine on your slide presentation is that we have average daily population of kids on juvenile charges of 44.6, average daily population of kids on adult charges, 37.8, which would give us an average daily population of 82.4, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, we've been closely monitoring this now for, you know, a number of years, and it appears to just hover around that 80, 80-plus, 80-minus, plus or minus number. Is that right? I mean, if we were to look at a lookback, say, the last four years, I've got the figures, but I, I'm just confirming with you that it's about that number.
I'd say 70 is probably more of a better number over that timeframe.
It might help going forward, if you could give us, I noticed that in some of these that there is a lookback, and so, you know, what we're experiencing is, you know, kind of a plateau in that number, which, it's great to talk about these potential diversion things, but it's almost like the event horizon, they keep going out and out and out, and the average daily population does not significantly change, which, considering the design of the proposed kids jail downtown, is going to be a problem when they design it for about half of that number. The other thing is the average length of stay that I think you have on page seven here, but slide 14, is 40 days. It would be good if we had, again, you know, kind of a historical picture of that, so that we can see over time whether progress is being made or not, relative to those two big metrics of, you know, how many kids are we housing? And then, the racial component that, again, is on page 14 of the slide presentation, indicates, again, an overwhelming majority, majority in the incarcerated youth of about 79%, right?
Correct.
Okay. Again, going back, has it always been that way? Have we made any progress towards eliminating that racial disparity? Because to me, it doesn't seem that we have. So those three big numbers, average daily population, average length of stay, racial diversity, don't seem to change from report to report to report. No reflection on your reporting, it's good reporting, and it's valuable to us, but looking at these things and having the public be able to easily access these things, so they can get a historical perspective, would be valuable going forward.
Okay, well, real quick, on the 82, you're 100% right, so I'm going to remind you about this one here. What are we doing about the 27 that did score? Because again, we have 27 kids who would not be kids who should be detained, so that's about our alternatives, that's about our ability to do that work 100%.
Yeah.
When you're talking about the length of stay over time, so you're asking for one that also includes adult?
Well, we have these three metrics, and there are lots of metrics you could pick, but these three big ones, I would say, would be valuable if we could see maybe a five-year lookback. You know, there's been a lot of talk about initiatives to get kids out of there, and, you know, I've been to Omaha Home for Boys, it's a great campus, it would be much better than, you know, where they are now in the, in the youth center. I don't know how robust our participation is, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out. It'd be good to know that five years ago, we didn't have any kids being diverted there, and now we've got Byreted Kids. Just to give us some perspective on, is progress being made, do we need more progress? Those types of things. Same with Uta Holly. These things are discussed as, I see it, in futuro. We're dealing in real time, in real kids' lives, so it would be good to know, this is happening, not this is being talked about happening, not that this is projected happening, not that there's a memo on this someplace, but actually, last year we didn't send any kids, this year we're sending five kids, 10 kids, whatever it is. That would be valuable information, to give us some perspective on whether or not we're making any progress. These things, as I indicated, don't seem to be progressing, they seem to be plateauing, they're not coming down. Population is not coming down, average length of stay is not coming down, racial disparities are not coming down. That's my point.
Okay. And I could definitely add about alternative utilization, we have a whole separate thing that does that, no problem, but I will say, we are trying to figure out some kind of a racial, ethnic disparities memo, because I do know some other things that we don't include here. For example, when we first, when I first started, and I could look at the number of kids presented to probation intake from law enforcement, that number was over 1,400. Last year, that number was under 600. So we do have other indicators that I can add in here. I know average daily population is what people tend to focus on, and I understand that. But there are other indicators of system movement, but again, you're right, and there's 27 kids in this quarter that we know needed something different than what they were given, which was detention, and so how do we break those 27 kids down to make sure we have something for them in the next quarter when it happens? I agree.
Right. And that's a real interesting question, because it would also be good to know if these disparities exist all the way along the conveyor belt, from the kids that are cited or arrested to the kids that are incarcerated, or is there variation and fluctuation? Last week, I toured the Cook County Temporary Juvenile Detention Center in Cook County, Chicago, and they have similar numbers, but an entirely different population. I mean, they have majority-minority populations in their detention center, but they have a majority-minority community. We do not. And so, you know, I spent a lot of time talking to them about, is that because of who's arrested and, you know, who ends up in detention? And I'd be interested in the same question here. Are more minority kids being cited and arrested on the front end, and therefore we are getting them in detention? I mean, if you put them on the conveyor belt, they will reflect that all the way. Or are we diverting more children from different ethnic groups? I mean, is there, is there a disparity in diversion as well that aggravates this? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, and I think it's a great question, which is why, for our county, that's exactly the question we have. We want to know. It's not enough for us to look at detention, for the time that I have been here, that's all we talk about is detention, but I feel the same way, I can give you law enforcement contact for a quarter, but I want to know, what are the top five charges? What are the top 10 charges? Are any of those things that could be pre-arrest diversion, is there a way for us to do work upfront? I agree, I agree with you completely. So that's where we're at now. We're trying to get with law enforcement, with the Juvenile Assessment Center, with the county attorney, to be able to get kind of what we do here about each of those decision points, because as we do this work, we always have to remind ourselves, it's not about the kids and families, no one's asking them to change. For as unpredictable as they are, I can tell you, as an old caseworker, you kind of know who's going to blow up overnight, or at least in the next week, and you can do things to stop that from happening, right? But we need to know it at every system point, I agree.
Great, thank you.
Shelley, on that point, do you know if law enforcement is using the tools we have with civil citation now, or cite and release, or whatever they call it? Because when there was a meeting I was at, and I asked if we had it, and the answer was yes, but it's not utilized. So the question has been for a long time, and I've not really received a good answer, as to if we have it, why aren't we using it? And now that it has been talked about, are we?
Two answers. So book and release happens all the time, and that's a number that I wish I would have started tracking. When I first started, we'd get law enforcement to call and say, "Hey, I got this kid, this is what's going on, we're going to let him go home." Just calling to let you know, in case something blows up later in the night, you'll have the first part of the story. So book and release happens all the time in Douglas County with all of our law enforcement agencies. Civil citation, the answer is no. As far as I know, no one is using that. It is sort of the thing behind our idea of, we want to see from system points what is happening, because I don't know, what if shoplifting's the number-one charge, or disorderly conduct's the number-one charge? What we know around the country is disorderly conduct is where you're probably going to see some racial/ethnic disparities. Kids of color tend to be ticketed for disorderly conduct more than white kids are. We don't have the data yet from law enforcement, but that's exactly why we want it, because what if I see there's a shoplifting or something, and we could do something that's pre-arrest diversion, where law enforcement's just allowed to say, "Here's a list of places that will do this kind of work, go do that, come let us know when you did," and so that the child's name never has to enter our computer system.
So are they not giving it to us?
We just started with this, and so yesterday was kind of our first look at our data committee to see what information they have, and then we asked some clarifying questions. Our eight Alternatives to Detention memo took about a year for us to give some, be able to give it out to people, because we'd bring it back every month, and there'd be, "Well, what about this? What about this?" You know, we'd ask a lot of questions, is it interesting, or is this something that's going to be important to the memo, or is it just interesting that we're asking? So we just started yesterday, starting with Omaha Police Department, to say, "Okay, here's what it looks like," and then asking some questions about what were the top five, to see, well, what exactly are kids being charged with? Where do we have spots that we could do pre-arrest diversion, or civil citation, or even kids who go all the way up in front of a judge? Do we have the possibility of any restorative justice in Douglas County, where kids could be allowed to do it at that point, and never be adjudicated, and be able to finish it before that happens? So, yeah, I think-
But they're willing to share now their data?
From my perspective of what I would need as a JDAI coordinator to do this work, my answer is yes. I know there's other data requests from them for research that aren't mine.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
When we were discussing the Courthouse Juvenile Detention Project, several people said, you know, "Why don't you focus on preventing this from happening?" And of course, Douglas County really is not in, we have no, no means to do that. I mean, you know, you'd have to, I was in Washington a couple of years ago, and I was listening to, this is how bored I was, I was listening to the juvenile discussion on television, it was quite interesting, and it was in Washington, and what they had done, they had really got, they were totally fed up with trying to deal with kids after things happened, so they were actually going into the homes and trying to find out, what is it you need? You know, is it, I mean, is, what is the family situation, what's going on? And, you know, I, it seems like we need to, we need to figure out a way to get that information legally and without intruding in privacy and so forth. I just, it's, you know, sometimes the, you know, there was a case recently where a woman was in a home, and I don't know what her relationship was with the children, maybe their mother, I'm not sure, but she was there, and she left with a man, and a 14-year-old was the oldest person there, and he took care of two siblings, or at least two kids, who were 10 and 8 or whatever, and got them, you know, fed them and did everything, and took care of them, and got them in their- them in their school bus. And his bus came earlier, so he was truant. So anyway, they went out and got him, and of course, they took the kids and put them where they belonged. But that's, you know, so, I mean, that's how he ended up. And I don't know how we do that, but I think there's some problems in the house if they're shoplifting, or if they're, you know, they're not getting what they need in the home. I don't know how we can possibly intervene, and that's really almost impossible to do. But that's where, you know, that's where it seems to all start. I mean, there's something going on with these kids. They're not being, they're just not getting what they need.
And I will say, that's not an unusual story, from my perspective, in the last twelve years doing this work. But what I can tell you is Douglas County does have a place for prevention, and it's Operation Youth Success. So they look at the prevention piece of this. And one of the things they're doing now is-
Who does that?
Operation Youth Success.
Oh, okay.
With the Missing Youth Services Task Force that they have, it's a partnership between Project Harmony and Law Enforcement, OPD. And they're looking now at lists of kids who are simply missing. These are not kids that are, have a warrant attached to them because they're involved in the court process. These are kids who are running away in Douglas County and figuring out, how do we get to them sooner? And one of the things they're doing that I just think is brilliant is, under, there's a law, legislative bill, eleven eighty-four, that allows professionals to get together and talk about cases, signing something that you won't discuss them. And so when they find youth that are missing, they're able to reach out to them and the family, the Project Harmony is, to say, is there something we can help you with? They're also able to have this meeting where they can invite community providers to say, have any of you worked with these guys before? Because a lot of times, what it's about is that matching of kids and families to the service provider, somebody who looks like them, somebody who worships like them. And so there is some good work happening at that prevention piece over that. And then as a result of the work they're doing, so we're now tracking, as it relates to detained kids, how many missings did they have when they came in to us before they had warrants? How many missings? And I'll tell you, I see kids with forty-eight missings. That tells me that's forty-eight times the system failed this child and their family without an intervention. They shouldn't have to come to detention.
Yeah.
There's forty-eight times we could have done something for this youth and their family before system involvement that may have prevented the fact that I'm now putting them in my data. So I think we agree with you, but there is some prevention work that is happening through Operation Youth Success.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Shelley. We will move on next to the Community Services. And Commissioner Kraft, I'll go ahead and take this. The resolution expressing the county board's support for changing the name of Sacks Palmer Creek, a tributary of the north branch of the West Papillion Creek, to Thompson Creek. This is not our final decision to make, but a recommendation from us carries a lot of weight with the people that do make it. This is at the request of the family that has the property, Thompson's. Is there anybody here with any of these parties? Come on down. Please. I'm glad you're here. Perhaps you can tell us a little more of what we're doing than I can. This is another new one for us. Thompson is the name of the family that farmed this some time ago.
Yes, who still farms the land.
Nice. Very nice. Please, welcome. If you introduce yourselves.
My name is Ann Thompson. This is Michelle Thompson.
Nice to have you with us this morning. Thanks for coming.
Michelle and her son farm the property that the creek is on. And it's in West Omaha, Hope Corn slash Bennington. And so it's not going to be there forever. You can't hear me? Is this better?
There you go. Thank you.
Given the area that the farm is in, it's not going to be there for a real long time, because it will be developed eventually. We would like for the history of the family and their legacy to be remembered by naming the creek Thompson Creek, just to honor the family. And, you know, make note that they were there for so long.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm thrilled you're doing it. And if there's anything we can do to help us, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, again, we aren't the final body. This doesn't make it official.
Correct.
US Geological, I think, is-
US Board of Geographic Names.
Something like that. But this recommendation will be forwarded to them. Commissioner Kraft.
How did it acquire its current name?
Nobody's sure. From the history I read, it goes way back, and somebody just assigned it this name, and it's never particularly been used, is my understanding. But it is its official name, at least to somebody in Washington.
Yeah, there's actually some kind of omission in the database, so that the current name isn't even labeled on most USGS maps. So we didn't know that when we started the process. However, the name for who it's intended for, I believe the reservoir, which is the headwaters of the creek, would still retain that name.
Okay.
But the creek itself, after the reservoir, would be renamed for Thompson Creek.
Thank you. And I appreciate that answer, and the reservoir will maintain as the name, because I didn't want to disrespect whoever may or whatever may be named after it.
Yeah, that wasn't our intention either.
Thank you.
We hadn't expected that.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
I'm just curious if, as some of the things with city names, they have the first name of the person as well. Have you thought about that, or is this for the family?
Actually, I had suggested the first name, and the point of contact with the Board of Geographic Names had said that they prefer to just use a single last name, as opposed to an entire first name or additional family member names.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, that's really nice you're doing this.
I think it's great. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing this. I noticed in the backup information that the family has been there about a hundred years, farming this area since the nineteen-twenty, it said in the thing. And there was two names there, a man and a woman. Is that your grandparents that were named in the documents?
There are our father and mother-in-law.
Your mother and father-in-law.
Yes. And it was our father-in-law's parents who had initially farmed the property. So now it's Shelley and her son farm it.
Thanks. Very good. Well, I think it's appropriate that the family's contribution to, you know, our community over a century is commemorated. It seems that the name that was slapped on it was just kind of a random name that the damning authorities put up there that had no connection whatsoever to the actual locale. So having a commemorative name on their family that actually worked the land, I think, is a great thing. Thanks for bringing it.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for coming down today. Appreciate it. We go down to legislative issues. The end is in sight, but not quite here yet. Anything that Commissioner Borgeson or Marcus, anything you want us to be acting on?
No, Commissioners, I don't have any update today. You know, we're approaching day forty in the legislature, so, you know, we're, hopefully, we'll be wrapping up in the next few months.
Thanks for your emails, too.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Commissioner. Oh, Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I wanted to mention that I contacted, I was reading a report from the Bar Association on the legislation they supported and so forth. And I know their lobbyists real well, Bill Miller and Kim Rovak is also his wife and a partner. So I sent Bill an email and just said, sometime I'd like you to come on up to Omaha, and I'll buy you to the Sons of Italy, and take you around to our facility, and then you can see why we need bail reform. Because he would be a strong voice representing the bar, and the judges are involved and so forth. And this may be a way to start something that, on the bail system. So I wanted to tell you that I did that, and I hope you are not upset with it. But I know, I've known him for years, and I think it'd be a good way to get some conversation started so that we don't, if they don't, if they're not for it, we'll never get it. And so that's why I wanted to try to convert him, or at least inform him.
Thank you.
And the other thing, well, it's not really, I guess it's later. I want to mention, we had a, I've asked Patrick to do this, but it's kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit. We did have an injury of an employee over at Corrections who was assaulted and had to go to the hospital, and another person who was injured but didn't go to the hospital. And I think it's just acknowledging that we do have people who are risking their health and well-being on the job, and I think we need to recognize it and wish him well.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Morgan.
Alan, your ears should have been ringing a couple of weeks ago when you were taking care of your back. It was a little challenging for us to get the vote. I just want you to know that. And your name came up several times by other Commissioners. So we're glad you're back and feeling good.
Thank you.
You know, I told this story a long time ago, but I'll tell it again. When I had a heart attack, and was mayor, the city council put a motion on to wish me a speedy recovery, and it passed four to three.
And the mayor, having mayor vetoed.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I believe we have wrapped up the county board meeting. We have a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. I will now call to order the Board of Corrections meeting. Could we have the roll call for that, please?
Commissioner Borgeson.
But we don't want to adjourn the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, is there an executive session for Board of Commissioners?
There's going to be, I have personnel, I don't know, no labor, no, just that one person.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Borgeson, you are technically correct. We are recessing then, as the Board of Commissioners, so that we can come back in for executive session as the Board of Commissioners, when we finally get done with the public portion of the meeting. So first item for-
I got to do the roll call for the Board of Corrections.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft has stepped away at the moment. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here, thank you. Item one, approval of the minutes from last February eleventh meeting. Was the pleasure of the board.
Second.
Questions or comments? Then could we please vote on item one? Board of Corrections, page three. We did Board of Equivalation, then Board of Commissioners, now we're coming back to Board of Corrections.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Commissioners Rogers and Kavanaugh and Kraft. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kraft is absent.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Corrections on anything not on the agenda? You're not here for that category, are you, Mike?
No, I'm not. I'm sorry.
No, I'm, just kidding. Thank you for hanging around. Sorry that this morning is a little bit-
No, and Commissioners, first off, right off, Mike Myers, Director of Corrections, I need to apologize. I discovered an administrative error this morning, as I was sitting in the audience, that the report that was given to you has March tenth on the cover, but it's actually the data from-
Oh.
-a couple of months back. So I just, what I was able to put together, the help of Diane, while we were sitting here, was, I have the summary of my report that I just handed out to you.
So this one that we had is obsolete?
You should disregard that.
Okay, fine.
It's, it's, so, my apologies. I didn't notice that until I was reviewing it, sitting in the audience, and noticed that it was the wrong month's data.
I'm glad you caught it before the meeting.
As am I. And I appreciate you moving us around on the agenda so that we're able to at least get you some information. And I do have, so you have the summary. I have my full report here on my computer that I can reference. We will get you hard copies of everything that you're used to receiving for us. My staff back at the jail has been preparing that. So we'll move forward as best we can. Okay. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services, following the seventh month of the fiscal year. We are over budget by five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. We do know that a credit will be given to our budget to compensate for the settlement of labor contracts, which will, should align us back and put us on target for our budget for the remainder of the year. Overtime and work hours rose a modest amount. But, in February, the amount of overtime hours worked were seven thousand, excuse me, eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three, which is nearly the same, but slightly higher than the previous month. The amount of spent on overtime costs during February was three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen, which again, is nearly identical, but just slightly higher. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections. Seventeen individuals served eighty-nine days in the sanctioned center. Twenty-six individuals served a combined one-hundred-and-forty days in the Transitional Discharge Center. A real feather in the cap and a key component to our hopes to revamp our pre-trial services and reduce the reliance on pre-trial detention was achieved in February, when we were selected as a learning site by, for the Center for Public Policy and Advancing Pre-Trial Policy and Research. We will be implementing a tool called the Public Safety Assessment. We will, a team of stakeholders, including the presiding judges of county and district court, the Department of Corrections, the public defender, county attorney, we will receive twelve months of assistance, beginning in April, to assist us with the implementation of the Public Safety Assessment. This is one piece of many that is on deck for this year, for us to try to tip the balance away from the trend of ever-increasing pre-trial detention numbers. The twenty-four-seven sobriety program had sixty-six admissions. There were three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-four breath tests completed. Twenty-one were positive for alcohol use, and there were nine no-shows for breath testing. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was ninety-nine point two percent. Sixty individuals were monitored for a total of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eight days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, zero tampering, and three alcohol violations. The overall SCRAM compliance rate was ninety-nine point eight percent. There were seven-hundred-and-eighty-six saliva drug tests administered. There were sixteen positive tests and thirty-four no-shows. Twenty-two drug-testing patches were submitted for testing with one violation. Work release admitted thirty-six individuals, and work release clients donated sixty-eight hours of community service. House arrest admitted eighty-one individuals. The Rantry Assistance Program admitted twenty-two. Corrections programs in the jail admitted sixty-eight individuals. Pre-trial services had twenty-eight individuals referred for priority prosecution, saving four-hundred-and-sixty bed days. There were three-hundred-and-fifty-six individuals placed on pre-trial release. In total, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-one individuals were managed on pre-trial release with a ninety-four percent compliance rate. And two-hundred-and-eighteen individuals visited the law library. Enclosure number three, Compliance. We are in preparations for our upcoming ACA accreditation audit, which will occur later this year, either in late October or early November. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Fourteen officers actually did graduate on March sixth, and they will complete field training on March twentieth. We're anticipating a class between fifteen and twenty officers, which will begin training on March thirtieth. We had three officers and one sergeant, Ross Stebbins, left employment. During February, we would like to offer Ross a happy retirement. He retired with over thirty years of service. We concluded the month by having three-hundred-and-sixty-six of our authorized three-hundred-and-ninety-six uniformed staff. That is a net gain of nine for the month. Enclosure number five, Population. We had one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-nine admissions. There are 1,705 releases. Our high count was 1,355. Our low count was 1,243. The average daily population was 1,307. Thankfully, that is a slight decrease. Overall, we did see some numbers decrease towards the end of February. We've kind of been back and forth a little bit in March on those numbers. Our custodial sanctioned bed days. There was a sharp increase, up to 502. I really don't have an explanation for the increase. We had been running about 300. So for the moment, I'm gonna assume that's an aberration, but we'll keep watching that closely. The U.S. marshal population decreased slightly. The ICE population remained stable. The felony pretrial population decreased slightly. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations remained stable. The female population decreased. There were four female housing units open throughout the month. And I do have a...my last bullet in that section says, "Please note the graphs, which you will receive subsequently." Our demographics and racial breakdowns of the jail. We've now converted that into a graphical, so you can see that over time. That...if the right report was printed and put in your book, you would have it. So I'll get that. It'll be sent to you. What I can tell you is those numbers are consistent with what I presented in previous months, and I can reference them here for you. Enclosure number six, medical. Our intake screenings, we had 1,296. There were 431 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 20 times for emergency medical care. Nine of those were by 911. There were 13 hospital admissions, which resulted in 88 days of hospitalization. That's a pretty high number for us. We had some...we've had some very sick people who've been in the hospital for several weeks. And that, you know, I've pointed this out before, that's a hidden cost. That's essentially like opening a new housing unit, because we have to staff those people around the clock. So we had 88 days where we had an additional staff member 24 hours a day at the hospital. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 149 psychiatric assessments. There were 174 initial mental health assessments. 64 mental health infirmary placements. There were six Board of Mental Health referrals. There were two referrals to long-term psychiatric care. And I did want to point out, and this again goes to the consistent and constant challenge we have managing individuals who are profoundly mentally ill. We had a point in time recently where we had, in our...on the male side of our infirmary, we had 14 individuals on suicide watch. Three or four of those are particularly determined that we have to keep a near constant watch on. So we have adjusted our staffing in our infirmary. We've developed some criteria when we staff the infirmary with an additional officer. Once we hit a certain number of...it's a kind of a formula of the overall population of the infirmary and people who are on a watch, we go ahead and put a second staff member in there in order to maintain the supervision that we need to for those high-risk folks. Other noteworthy items. We have made a recommendation for replacing our security system. And if the meeting had gone in the order that I anticipated it would go this morning, you would have approved it after I spoke to you, but you already have approved it. So thank you for that. This will replace a lot of our dated technology. It'll be a process that will take about 18 months from when it commences to do all of the cabling, replace cameras and controls throughout the facility. We did work with the vendor to try and spread the costs out over a five-year period. That contract, once we get that finalized, will be coming back to you guys for final approval in the coming weeks. We are making plans, and actually, from when I finish this report Friday morning, those...what I have in my report is somewhat dated already. So I'll read it as written, and then I will clarify any additional changes. We are making plans to deal with the coronavirus in the event that it does begin to spread locally, which we now know that it has. We have developed a multi-tiered plan, which will be activated when the first locally confirmed case of coronavirus is present in the community. We have already taken steps to increase our quantity of food, medicines, and hygiene products on hand. We have increased our stock of personal protective equipment and sanitation supplies. As many of these items are in demand worldwide, there are certain supplies which we have not been able to obtain in the quantities that we would prefer, but we have gotten all that we can get our hands on, and we'll continue to look. Our plans include the following possible contingencies, depending on the severity of a local outbreak. Some things...some of these things are already in place, such as frequent education for staff, visitors, and inmates regarding the prevention and recognition of possible infection. We are screening individuals at booking in individuals who meet a couple of different thresholds. We are...current plan, at least, is to refer them out for medical evaluation prior to them coming to and being admitted into the jail. We are in the process of coordinating with our local justice partners and law enforcement agencies. We have a meeting set up for Friday with just the heads of these departments so that we can all discuss our plans with each other, because we want to avoid the confusion of not knowing what the courts might be doing differently or what the police department is...might be doing differently. And we will be doing things differently. So I think it's important that we all get on the same page. The suspension of all programs and volunteer services. I actually did implement that on Friday afternoon. That is to reduce the number of people coming into the secure perimeter of the jail just to the security staff and our internal services that have to keep functioning. We have a plan for hospital transport for confirmed cases. Again, that plan is fluid, depending upon what's happening in the community and how our healthcare...community-wide healthcare resources need to be allocated. We may do modification of public and professional visitation. We have increased our inventory of electronic monitoring equipment. I reviewed a few weeks ago a document from Emory University, which provided guidance to correctional facilities, and it included attempting to reduce your population through the use of electronic surveillance, GPS, and other technologies. So we have made arrangements with our vendor to have a good number of all the units that we typically use on hand, and we'll be working with the courts to try to reduce our population over the course of this week. We actually developed a specific goal yesterday. I tasked our pretrial services team with screening the entire population of the jail. This morning, that was 1,300 people. And finding the hundred safest risks to recommend to the courts for supervision in the community. My...I have no belief that all 100 of those people will be released, but my goal is to reduce the population sufficiently so that I can close a housing unit and have it remain closed, because if we need to quarantine someone, it's too late to try and do that process after the person is in our custody. So we're gonna try and get that housing unit closed by the end of this week and be able to have that in reserve. It's a housing unit where all the...it's a celled housing unit. And actually, in the old part of the jail, it's been...it's one of the renovated units. It has...all the doors have hatches, so if need be, we can slide food and medicine in without minimizing direct contact with our staff. We also are working to modify the 24/7 sobriety program. We want to start using more remote technology. The act of breathalyzing somebody is a high-risk activity. So we are attempt...we have remote breathalyzers that we will...that people can take to their homes and do the program from that manner. So we're working with the courts to develop those protocols. And we're gonna start, actually, today, start transitioning people to doing the sobriety checks at home rather than in person. We have...we have many emergency and essential staffing plans based upon different thresholds of infection, should we have numbers of staff being affected. And as I've already mentioned, we have identified units, one in particular, that we will use for quarantine. We actually will use, hopefully, if, you know...hopefully, this doesn't happen at all, and we're taking a lot of steps that ultimately prove unnecessary. But I think that the stakes are pretty high for us if we did have an infection that spread in the jail. So we want to act out of an overabundance of caution. We...that initial unit that we designate as a quarantine unit, we will actually plan to house both men and women in the same unit. We'll put one on a lower level...you know, men on a lower level, women on an upper level, because I'm not sure I can get two units empty. But we will...we will manage that by the times that they're out of their rooms and so forth. You know, with...it's not something we prefer to do, but it keeps our capacity as high as it can be for everybody else and allows us to safely care for individuals who may be infected. We will be prepared, as we possibly can be, for the various scenarios that we may encounter. Through tremendous effort, sacrifice, and dedication of our staff, we have dealt, as you know, recently with staffing shortages, and we have dealt with an outbreak of influenza within the past year in the jail. The lessons learned from those experiences are serving us well and will continue to serve us well as we implement...in the event that we need to implement the measures included in our plan. And with that, I am ready for your questions.
Sounds good, Mike. The first comes from Mark, Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Since you're gonna be putting women on the higher level, I'm sure Mary Ann's very pleased to see you elevating women. Enclosure number two, public safety assessment. I can view that two different ways. One is that we are desperately in need of it, and the other is that we can provide a good learning experience and will benefit from it, and I'm sure will benefit from it. I don't need to comment on that. I just wanted to state that's what goes through my mind. Classes in jail, the...those are gonna be suspended?
The ones that require outside people to come in and do them are suspended. The ones that we do internally with our own staff, such as GED, and our reentry specialists also do group activities a part of their normal day, those things are continuing at this point.
And since those classes are gonna be suspended, some of them, are we gonna try to have staff substitute for the volunteer?
To the extent...so our reentry specialists will try to do things that they, you know, do different groups and different things to try and supplement in the meantime. In the long term, this may depend upon whether we have staff who also start to become ill. Then that...
Because one of the dangers that we have is boredom.
Absolutely.
And... In the class that you're gonna be training, the class I went to the graduation, you did a fast track. Are you doing that still?
We are...we still have that in place, yes. So there...we are using overtime. They are doing 10-hour days during training instead of eight-hour days so that we finish that work in four weeks instead of six. And then they do their two weeks of field training.
And having 14 inmates on suicide watch, that's higher than normal, isn't it?
It is, and that just counts the men. There were also a few women. But I wanted to make mention of how our infirmary was impacted recently by an amazing...there's typically a handful, maybe four or five people that are on suicide watch.
That was gonna be my next question, yes, okay. And the 24/7, when you take the test kit at home or whatever, how do we verify?
So we have...we've been using this technology for our house arrest program for a few years. Because 24/7 had...it was grant. There was some grant funding up until...we're no longer utilizing the grant because we weren't actually spending any money from the grant, because the program's become self-sufficient through participant fees. So we kept all the equipment separate just for the accounting for the grant. We have had this technology. They're basically...it's a piece of equipment, which is a breathalyzer, a camera, and it takes a GPS point, and it uses facial recognition software so that we know they didn't hand it to their, you know, somebody who wasn't drinking. It can go...we can program how often...how often and when the tests are given, up to four times a day if we felt it was necessary. And they do the breath test from home. We immediately get those notifications online.
I'm impressed. Oh, hospital transport for confirmed cases. Do we have a biocontainment pod of any sort?
We have a couple of...we have four rooms in our infirmary, two for men, two for women, which are negative airflow rooms. We actually probably don't want to put individuals who are infected in our infirmary because we have other individuals who may be fragile to begin with. So that's why we're trying to create a separate closed unit, which we can...which will be kind of at the far back of the jail.
On TV, though, I've seen pods where they encase the individual in. That...I've seen...they put that pod then into the transport to protect everybody in the transport.
We would...so if we had an individual who we thought was positive, our first call would be to the health department. And then...and we would allow them to help us coordinate how to get that person safely from where they are to where they need to be. We don't have that equipment ourselves. We would isolate the person in a holding cell by themselves until that equipment was present.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
If I understand you correctly, the racial diversity graph that was contained in previous reports was just not prepared for this one?
No, so I didn't have a graph before. I just gave you a list of numbers. What I've done to...what you will be getting shortly, and what you'll be getting from...is from this time forward, is a graph that shows you...so you can track changes over time from month to month. So that's what I changed for this month, unfortunately.
Oh, I understand. You'll email that to us, right?
Yes, we'll email it to you.
The same on the...in enclosure four, previously, we would have the authorized strength versus on hand.
I have that in front of me, if you'd like me to...
Okay. If you could just send that to us.
Yes, I can.
Again, I understand the problems getting everything in the one report. Kudos on your preparations on the flu. And, you know, you had this experience in the recent past with the regular flu, I guess you'd call it. But now with the coronavirus pandemic, you've taken proactive steps. And I'm really happy to hear this. I hope to hear the same from, you know, all of our departments in public session. It's important that we take these steps. This is a captive population. We're responsible for them. And it'd be like a big cruise ship that you're running there, and nobody's getting off.
Essentially, yes.
Right. So a couple of things. They have...you've made, I think, really good steps on providing some medical assistance and analysis of people's conditions. The one thing coming in that is as essential as medical help to these incarcerated individuals is their legal help. And I was wondering, because of the threat of contagion, if any steps have been taken to do electronic conferencing with legal representatives so that we don't have to bring people in constantly, day by day, and have hundreds of contacts inside and outside coming in and out?
Yes. That...we have...we have some capability to do that. The public defenders have a couple of stations where they can...they can act from the public defender's office through a secured private connection, talk to their clients who are incarcerated. We are actively developing additional capacities as we speak. I went up pretty high in our...the chain of command of our company, who we do internet visitation with, to ask them to develop some capacities so that if the courts were impacted or we had a sick individual who still needs to have their constitutional rights protected, that those hearings can be done through technology rather than physically transporting somebody to a courtroom and thereby placing additional people at risk.
So just to differentiate, there are two kinds of contacts. The due process contacts you're talking about, I understand. These are the client contacts that occur daily, and there must be scores, if not hundreds of them.
Hundreds.
Way more than the court contacts. So what about those contacts?
So we have... Some of that, Commissioner, depends on how widespread it gets in the community. You know, we have, like I said, the public defender has access to two stations where they can...and we can make those available. They basically are available from sunup to sundown, seven days a week for them.
These are two laptops, or what are they?
Yes. That they can share among themselves, that have secured private connections. You know, the rest of our visits are recorded. These are not, because they're confidential.
Right, right, right.
And...
Let me just stop you right there. So they probably provide the bulk of client consultations per day. If we increase the number of those laptops, could we increase the number of accesses without physical contact?
It's not quite that simple, because there's a lot of other technological pieces that have to be, to secure the connection and so forth, that have to be, to be made, but yes, that's what we're actively working on right now.
Okay, good.
We also have a room in our attorney clergy area that has a closed, you know, it's more like talking to somebody at a window where you have a speaker through it, rather than just sitting across the table. That's another, we typically use that for inmates who are maybe particularly, might be dangerous, and so that room will probably be pressed into service more often if we, if we need to.
So this is hugely important, if it gets loose in the correction center, and we've got to presume that it will, hope for the best, prepare for the worst, then those people are going to be in a contained population like these poor folks on these cruise ships, it's going to go, regardless of, you know, the preparation you make, through that, like your flu epidemic did a couple of months ago. So having limited social contact with the outside world is important to the entire community, and that's why I'm drilling down on this. We know those people have a right to legal representation, we know that they're going to want to and have to contact their attorneys, they don't have to have a face-to-face with their attorneys, they have to have to face-to-face with court, not with the attorneys. So limiting that as much as possible is something I'm glad to hear that you're, you're working on.
And we may even be conducting court hearings remotely as well, if push came to shove.
Yeah, and the, the court things are held in a segregated unit, I know. I have a couple more questions when we get back to this.
Okay, we'll get back to you then. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thanks, Mike, for the report, and just one more graph that we could look at, and that is on the medical piece of the inmates that, the incarcerated individuals that were being sent to the, out for medical care, because I think we need to really watch that. And then, just if you don't know now, that's fine, but could you, what are they being sent out for? Was it the flu, was it the...
No, these are typically emergent issues. It could be a diabetic issue, or a blood pressure issue that we can't, we don't have, we haven't been able to control with our in-house medical. It could be anything, like if there was a fight and somebody needed stitches, and it was after hours, because we don't have that level of a provider available in the jail 24/7, so if we didn't have a doctor or a nurse practitioner available to do the stitching, it could be something like that. And the, what I can tell you from my recollections is that the numbers that went out is actually fairly consistent with previous months, it's the number of days, typically, we might have 35 days of hospital stays for, for 22 people that were admitted. I mean, it's usually fairly quickly in and out, but we had an individual who had gunshot wounds to his back, we had another, a female that's still currently in the hospital that's had a plethora of health issues that, she's been in there for, you know, for a few weeks, so that, it just takes one or two people to spike those numbers up.
Right. I just think it's something that, cost-wise, we need to really keep in mind.
Absolutely. I can easily convert that to a graph.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I want to ask about the ACA training, I'd like to get a report on, you know, how many employees are involved in that and what's been going on with it. I was never in favor of it, and so I still have questions about its usefulness and its value, what, I don't think that it gets us anything. I think, you know, our employees are dedicated without being told how to behave, and that, from another organization, they already, I think they should know already, although that's, you know...
Absolutely.
So I'd like a report on that, how many people we got involved, and what it's costing and everything else.
Will do.
Also, I would be interested if it's somehow, I don't know how you can do this, maybe you can, I think you've done it in the past, how many people we have that would be subject to, who would be good prospects for bail, people that are in jail for, you know, they have to pay 250 to get out and all that kind of stuff. If you'd let us know, I think we need to start trying to figure that out.
That may be a fortunate coincidence of the work we're doing this week to identify the 100 people who we think are the best risked to put out on pre-trial supervision. We'll probably be generating a lot of data and reports on those folks that may answer that very question for us.
Okay. Then on page three, you've got something called custodial sanction bed days.
Right.
502, is that solitary confinement?
No.
What is it?
This is, custodial sanctions are, that is part of the LB 605 reform, so this is a, for individuals who are on post-release supervision, so they've completed their, their prison sentence, they are now, from LB, the change from LB 605 is those, for a good portion of people leaving prison, they are now supervised by probation instead of parole.
Okay.
So these are people who, it's basically another kind of probation violation, and that, that they're sanctioned to a few days here and there to try and send them a message that they need to start being compliant with their release conditions.
Okay. On the 14 on suicide watches, I assume that is 24 hours watching, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, and have you, I know we had some difficulty with people, we've had some problems, but is there something that we should be doing to look at what other facilities are doing, maybe they're, and I, not that this is what you do, but I was looking at Oystown psychiatric unit for young people, and they really have some incredible facilities that make it safe, and I don't know whether we should try to mimic something or if there's anything else we can do.
I'm always open, especially if, with our highest-risk population, I'm always open for input and new ideas.
Sure.
On how we can manage that.
Good. Well, I noticed Claire turned the light on for me, so I got to get ready to speed it up here.[1015.01][1015.01](laughing). I did want to, I think the last thing I wanted to just be sure that, in the, excuse me, in the unit where you're going to have women and men, that's going to have, you're going to have 24-hour supervision there, aren't you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And they will not be out of their cells at the same time, you know, they'll be, you know, they'll be, rest assured, we will take every precaution necessary to keep them separate from each other.
Well, I had a, I had a comment, you're doing such a good job, I was going to suggest we raise your salary, but he's turned off the light.[1043.23][1043.23](laughing).
Came so close, Mike.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, did you have more?
Regarding your testing of folks that become potentially symptomatic, do you have tests on site?
We do not. We would, if we had somebody who, we've developed criteria, where, which would trigger us to call the Health Department, we'd isolate that individual in a holding cell, pardon me, until such time as we either, you know, if, if, I can't answer whether we would do testing in the jail or whether we would send them out, you know, but, but we would, I've talked with Dr. Poor over the weekend about these scenarios, and our first call would be to them, you know, we would try to get the person to put on the personal protective gear for their, for everybody's protection, our staff would immediately have it on, we would take them to a holding cell right outside of admissions and hold them there until we get direction from the Health Department on how to proceed.
Okay. So, you know, this might be something that we move up the list, which is hot topic people who are symptomatic, and we can't test them on-site, leaving them in a, you know, your facility's not designed to be a containment unit, is just going to increase our thing. So having that speedy protocol with the Health Department or whoever else you have to, either to bring the test in or to get the person out, and then, what if somebody tests positive? What's the protocol then?
Well, our hope is, is that they would, we would not have housed them in the jail.
Yeah.
There may be, depending upon what the person is charged with, that, that may not be our choice to make. That's why it's critical for us to develop, to empty this unit out, so that we can keep this person separated from everyone else. There's a lot of variables, and we just don't, you know, we have, we have, our, our plan is actually a little over 70 pages long, considering all of the different thresholds.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, somebody's tested, I mean, the testing gets worked out, somebody tests, they're positive for the coronavirus flu, they're in your facility. What does the 70 pages say about that individual?
Sure. We would consult with the Health Department, we would, our first choice would be for them to be taken out of the jail, safely transported out of the jail, and treated at a medical facility. If that is not possible, then we will, then we will have to isolate the person inside of the jail and, and care for them in that manner.
Okay. And is there some place where you can do that with minimal contagion problems?
Yes, the, we have, the unit that we identified is, is at the, it's at the end of the hall, so there will be not a lot of traffic coming back and forth. We would do several things. One, it would be the same medical staff, the same security staff, we would have the same people working in there, those staff would be given all of the personal protective gear, the supplies that we were able to obtain, they would have those. These, the, these were the recently renovated units, all of the cell doors have hatches, so that we can place food, place medicine, you know, legal materials, so we can go through a hatch, and we can avoid direct human-to-human contact.
Let me just stop you there. Are these cells on the same air circulation as the rest of the facility?
They do share an air circulation with one other housing unit. I am not aware that that is a risk, a high-risk for transmission, from my understanding, and granted, I'm not the expert to be asking, but, you know, the education we've gotten is droplets, the sneezing and so forth, and so having it travel through the air ducts 50 feet, you know, it was...
Your preferred protocol would be to remove the individual from the population entirely, get them out of the facility?
Correct.
Okay.
But we do have to be prepared in case we can't.
Sure.
If the hospitals are full or the person's charged...
Well, and if you have multiple cases, that might be a real problem getting them out of there, so.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions for Mike? Sorry to take so much of your day, I know these are busy dates for you as well, but thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is to adjourn as the Board of Corrections and reconvene as the County Board, and we have a couple of seconds, could we please vote on that?
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, and we will be going back in just a moment into executive session, actually what we're doing is finishing up the one from before, we did try to keep it short. However, I would first like to give a moment of personal privilege to Commissioner Borgeson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Many of you know, and many of you have worked with Supervisor Dwayne Wilcox from Washington County, and I was alerted yesterday that he had passed away, and so I just wanted to let you all know, and I will forward you the details of his memorial and such, but Dwayne was on the board, Region Six board with me for many, many years, and he loved what he did, and as a matter of fact, when he was no longer on the Washington County Board of Supervisors, he was on our ANOAA advisory board, and so he stayed active, he stayed involved, and he will be missed, not only in Washington County, but down here in Douglas County for that work, as well as our stormwater management work that we did on our policies and procedures. So again, I just wanted to let you all know that he had passed away. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family.
He was a class act, thank you for bringing that to our attention. With that, we are ready to recess back into executive session for purposes of discussing personnel.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. Again, this is an executive session to discuss personnel issues, could we please vote?
Who's last meeting here for the recent quarters?
I don't know, it's not long, it's coming up pretty quick.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh, it's yes, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody with the slightest suspicion, the first thing you do is you put a mask on them, Mark, you know, I mean, it's more important to get a mask on them than it is on yourself.
Motion to, an alternative motion to...
Reconvene and adjourn.
Reconvene and adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, or...
Second?
Okay, Mike, thank you. All right, and could we please vote?
Not in the second.
Start, vote. Okay. We need, Commissioner Kavanaugh, would you mind? All right. Motion passes, and I would just like to state for the record that although the Commissioner Morgan, no, he's not here, I know they're joking around, you just praise Ellen and give me a hard time, but I would like to say I thought Ms. Boyle did a great job in Ellen's absence last week, especially since there were items that were not on the agenda that we had to add in, and that's not quick for anyone to do, even Ellen, so, all right.
Thanks very much.
Well, good luck, Kim, the problem is, we really love Ellen, and, you know, you got, not that we don't love you.